2018 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting to order. So first order of business is agenda changes and you want to have agenda changes?
I just had a quick something at the end.
Okay, that's other business.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to public comments for non-agenda items. We'll recognize that we have nobody in the audience tonight. So we will move on to item number three, official map revisions, public comments and questions, and review correspondence. Unfortunately, there's no one here.
So no one here like there was last time, but there was a few pieces of correspondence that I forwarded to you in your packet. The first one was from Lenore Budd, who I think spoke with you at an earlier meeting from the Trails Committee perspective, and she works with me in the planning and zoning office. She's our admin assistant, so we talk, we talk in the office about this sort of stuff. Anyways, she noticed that the, I think in part because of their recommendation, we had moved the Juprags Park future trail connection from Ballard's Corner Road to Shelburne Falls Road because there, there's, there's some issues with trying to go from the end of Ballard's Corner Road into Juprags. So she walked that Shelburne Falls potential connection, and there are some problems there too with ditching and existing stone wall and Brad Weiner's old property and some topographic challenges. She doesn't think it's impossible, but she thinks it could be difficult and that the original location might still be viable or as viable due to those other constraints. So in any case, hopefully you saw in her letter, she's basically saying it'd be good to have both. And even though the, there are some wetland issues to go from the end of Ballard's Corner into Juprags, she thinks that those could be dealt with if they are less costly than, than extending the sidewalk down Shelburne Falls Road to then cut into the park, you know, further west. She thought it'd be good to show both. She also acknowledged that they've been working with Bob Melion, who's the owner of Travias. He's never been real partial to having a trail he's been there, but he's also been actively trying to sell the property for many years, and at some point he probably will, and perhaps the next landowner would be more inclined to invite the public to their restaurant and the trail next to it. So in any case, that was her recommendation, was to add, add it back in. You also got feedback from Nathan Frye, which was more, I thank you, I think, more than anything else, but I told him that it was, it was relevant to what you were talking about, and so I would forward it to you, so I did. He's a, he's a super thoughtful guy and has talked to me on a couple of different occasions about maybe getting on the Village Steering Committee, which is sort of defunct, and so he's been talking with the, the remaining members of that, and I don't know if maybe he can help re-energize it or not, but anyways, he's a pretty thoughtful guy. So you got that comment, and then, and then there were Rolf's comments actually, which he's a, he's a member of the commission, so different kind of comment, but since he said he would be late, he asked me to forward those along, and I think they were relative to the conversation, some of the conversation you had last time, especially regarding the, the future road connection through the, the west side of the Farmall Drive neighborhood. But I think he's going to be here tonight, just later, so you may want to delay the conversation of that. Until then, it's up to you, Joe.
Well, I mean, this is, this is the last of the official map stuff unless, for tonight anyways, unless we have someone show up.
Well, true, you could table it and go back to it later in the meeting if you, if you were so inclined, or you could just take it up at the next meeting, you know, this is on your docket, one more meeting for November 28th as well. I guess there was one other item. Last meeting, I wasn't here, but in your packet, I sent you sort of a written summary of, of a conversation I had with John Mead over at Harten Mead about a Stormwater Official Map element over there, and I indicated that it might be good to talk about it when I was here, since I had a communication with him. Did, I, I didn't see in the minutes that you discussed it at the last meeting, so I can summarize that now. It's, I mean, you, I reiterated it in my, in the email I sent you.
Sounds like a good plan.
Essentially, he was saying that he has some concerns about that official map element in part because, you know, they may, they may be thinking about future development potential, you know, the, the property's not going to, I guess the business model is changing over there. I didn't realize that they, that they were sort of spinning off the, the oil service to another person, company, yeah, still operating out of their shop, but.
Yep, and I, yes, and I think they may eventually, it may all go that way.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's going to take time, I think.
John didn't say that there was any particular time horizon, but he did say that they were, he and Doug were thinking about the future and, you know, how things would go, and so in any case, he and I walked that swale, which is the, the area where that Stormwater Official Map element is shown, is along a stream that, that starts in the Lyman Meadows condos, the headwaters of it so to speak, and flows across Lyman Park Road or Lyman Meadows Road, and then runs along the edge of Lyman Park Road, the access to the park, on the north side of the Harten Mead property. And, and our transportation consultant, Stormwater consultants, when we did this study several years ago, said, you know, there's a lot of untreated stormwater coming off of the Papa Nick's parking lot and Lyman Meadows Road and Lyman Park Road and collecting in that stream slash swale, and that might be a good place to detain it and do some treatment. So that's why it's on the official map. Anyway, John and I walked it, and again, he said, you know, some concern about impacts on the ability to future development, he, you know, he said, listen, if somebody were to develop, they would have to treat the stormwater from whatever was happening on their property, they might not do it there. We have had, I will honestly say, we have had some issues in terms of proposing stormwater treatment in map streams, and certainly within wetland areas. Andrea Morganti and I had tried to work up a proposal to do some stormwater treatment and detention on the Cheese Plant property, the undeveloped portion that's just north of your land, James, north of the Wellhouse, which, you know, it's green space, they're not using it for anything, so it seemed like a nice candidate for that, but it's in the flood hazard area and it's mapped as, or it appears to be wetland, and when we approached the, the state funding source that we would go to for this stormwater treatment, they said, we're not going to, we're not going to work in a wetland area, you know, those areas have to be sort of left to their own devices and stormwater treatment happens somewhere else. So in any case, getting back to the Harten Mead property, if you can, if you have the map in front of you, this stormwater, does somebody have the number on it with?
Number two.
Number two. It, it looks like a linear feature and then a little bulbout on the, on one side. That bulbout is a wetland area, it's full of cattails right now, and so our ability to do a stormwater treatment in that spot might be difficult because of that. So anyways, that was some of what he and I talked about. He did have some concerns about the way that, the history of that, of how that stream has been, or swale, has been channelized and culverted. So it proceeds from Lyman Meadows down the Harten Mead property line. Once it gets as far west as it's going, it makes a hard right turn and heads north, and it does that through a culvert that's, that is underneath the land between the Catholic Church parking lot and the Lyman Park parking lot. So it's a very long culverted section of stream, and then it, it outlets next to Lyman Park and becomes a channel again and, and sort of naturalizes a bit more when it comes on to James's property, once it comes past Lampman's, but that area from Lampman's back to Lyman Meadows functions a heck of a lot more like a drainage swale than it does a natural stream due to the culverting and the like. In any case, John was explaining the history of when that culvert was put in and the fact that it was set fairly high so that water ponds on their property because the culvert wasn't set, you know, in the right place, which he's absolutely right about. When you look at the culvert, both the inlet and especially the outlet are obviously high. The outlet, there's, water actually splashes out of it and falls maybe, I don't know, six to eight inches before it hits the ground and then proceeds, so that, that's, that's a, that's a bad design. Aquatic organisms can't jump up and, you know, continue on in a stream, and so in any case, some of what's happening along their property line is man-made reasons and not really because of what nature wants to have happen there. All of that contributes to, again, his sort of uncertainty as to what the future might hold for that part of the property.
So, and isn't the future of stormwater eventually, people will probably be required to not let it leave their property, and then it would become the responsibility of Lyman Meadows and Park?
I don't think so, Marie. I think what's happening is with, with existing development that's either never got a state stormwater permit or got one and the state allowed it to expire and didn't enforce it, that those responsibilities tend to come to the towns, and then the town has to do something with it either downstream or in another location. And that's part of why it does, does make sense to put these things on the official map if, if they're in good locations, because eventually we, the town may be responsible for treating that stormwater. New developments, I, I agree, new, new developments will be held to today's standards and possibly, you know, bigger future standards, you know, or more stringent future standards, but.
We have, we have a built village center that's, it's almost impossible to retrofit and retrofit in pieces.
Right, but, but in this case, and I'm certainly not an expert, but I would think you would go back to Lyman Meadows, because it's coming from them, you said.
Well, in part, a good chunk of it is coming from the rather expansive parking lot behind Papa Nick's. That all drains to the north and eventually crosses, it actually runs over Lyman Park, Lyman Meadows Road and dumps into the swale. It's not the best drainage system back there, but there's enough asphalt that it kind of holds it, and there's, you know, there is sediment, but not as much if, if there wasn't some asphalt. But in any case, it's both Lyman Meadows, it's Papa Nick's, it's the drainage coming off of Lyman Park Road, which is a private road that we, the town has an easement over for parking at that parking lot. So there's a number of contributing areas. I, actually, I don't think that the Harten Mead property sends much of their stormwater in that direction, even though they have a fair amount of impervious surface. I think that gets picked up closer to 116. In any case, I, I think that if, if we were interested in an official map element for stormwater in that vicinity, it might not, that might not be the best location for it. It might, a better location might be either on the Lyman Meadows common land somewhere, and you might have to redirect drainage to get to this spot, or in Doug Mead's backyard, which I'm sure he wouldn't be real pleased about either.
And that's very, very wet, too.
Yes, it is very wet, and actually, that's a, that's a good point. He maintains it, so it looks like yard. I wouldn't be surprised if it were allowed to naturalize if it wouldn't be deemed a wetland, and then maybe that wouldn't be a good place to put a stormwater treatment detention pond, because the state frowns on using wetlands in that regard. So it's complicated, a little tough over there.
It is, but I, I think that the Lyman Meadows, there's enough property there not used.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a matter of how you get the, how you get the stormwater from where it's going now into a new space in that regard.
It's uphill of.
Yeah, yeah, that water's not going to flow uphill, but they do have, I wish I had my computer so I could project it, but if you think about Lyman Park, there's, there's a pretty substantial green space between the park and the first condos that sort of face the park, and I wonder if there's a, a way in that location to redirect some of that development's drainage.
Well, that seems to be uphill. Well, it did too as well, you know, if I think if I, if I, it's been a long time since I've spent significant time in that park, but, you know, it seemed that there was a.
It definitely goes uphill from the park to the condos, yes.
I think you're dealing with the same.
But you have some green space on number six, which is Lyman Park, too, unless I'm reading it wrong, get, maybe you should get a map.
Yep.
So I don't know, that's.
You're right, it is, there is some of that on the edge.
So maybe, is that what you're referring to?
Hmm.
Who knows?
No, I was thinking more of the, of the space sort of, if, if you're looking at the map, from the number six, south to the road, that little slice there, there's some space. I think there is some drainage there now. I don't know, it may, it may warrant some more intensive looking at that before we plop something on the map that's actually going to be a good idea.
Is it too late to do a road trip?
Well, tonight it is, but it's not too late seasonally. Thankfully, we haven't gotten a big dump of snow, so, and water, water's flowing, so it's, it's, you can still see, you know, what's happening out there if you want to take a walk sometime.
Well, not during, yeah, individually, but not during.
Right, not during a meeting, but if you want to do it on your own, maybe this weekend again, if we don't get seven inches of snow, which I heard we might actually, but.
We are supposed to, maybe, unfortunately.
And I've been walking at noon time every day, so I'll, I'll take a walk over tomorrow and check it out one more time. In any case, that's a long-winded explanation of the conversation John and I had. You know, I think he has, frankly, I think he has sort of normal property owner concerns about having part of his property indicated on the official map. My concerns are more permitting-wise, whether if the town wanted to do something there, the state would even let us, given that there is already wetland on a, on a mapped stream, even if it's a highly constrained one.
I mean, it's kind of a problem. I mean, you know, if you look at this area, you know that we do need to plan for some stormwater.
Yeah.
I mean, we have existing problems, and the question is where, you know, what works?
Yeah, I mean, if we, I suppose we have the technology and the aerial photography, you know, we could do some mapping of the impervious surface areas in that drainage and see sort of where the bulk of it is coming from. Lyman Meadows is big, I mean, that's a large development, there is a lot of impervious surface, so that, that would be worth looking at, but frankly, Lampman's is a, is a sea of impervious surface too, and I think that all drains right back to that stream.
It does. So let me, let me throw something out. I mean, what if, what if we, people may hate this idea, and I, I really, I have never done the research to see how effective this is, but one of the things that Hannaford was going to do to try and mitigate that wetland over there was to, was to put it subsurface below their parking lot, basically.
It's expensive, though.
It's expensive, but, right, if you, if you thought about the church parking lot in the back end of Lampman's, right, those are, those are both downhill of a significant, you know, drainage area, so gravity works, they, they work better, right? It kind of makes sense to put it in there, either in Lyman Park or, you know, co-located with something like a parking lot.
Because the church certainly has a lot of parking lots.
Has a lot of parking lots.
Both sides. There's got to be as much as Lampman's or more.
More, easily more.
Yeah, when you look at the parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can understand wanting to put it in, in Lyman Meadows condos, but you don't capture much of the drainage area there.
Right, because it's moving.
It's possible that there isn't one place that's going to adequately capture and deal with, with these, these historic lots that don't have any treatment. It's possible that, that, the best solution might be work with Lyman Meadows to find a place on their property to deal with most of their runoff, find, talk to the church about some sort of underground storage treatment someday, and maybe Lampman's the same, you know, if Hannaford actually goes forward at some point, and Lampman's gets redeveloped for something else, that might be an opportunity to do that.
Remember that, that underground system at Hannaford was, is really only storage. There's no treatment.
Right, under the, under the state regs, you'd have to add, you'd have to request some special dispensation for that.
If they would, if they would grant it or find a way to do treatment.
Right.
Maybe not in an underground, but associated with a storage that's underground. Maybe if it could be let out more slowly, then an area could absorb it more easily that was naturally landscaped.
I think Marie's point is probably the, the biggest one. The cost is going to be huge with an underground storage system of that magnitude, and, and I can't see the town toning up for that unless we're required to, and unless the state were to kick in funding, you know, if the clean water funding actually, if some clean water funding happens and, and Heinsburg falls into an impaired status, maybe we would be eligible for more of that. But I think that the conversation you're having now is not as much about the technical specifications for doing a stormwater, but rather whether or not to set us, you know, indicate some areas you want to set aside for such things on the official map. And I guess what I'm talking around is that it may be premature to do, to say much about this particular drainage area if we need to do more work figuring out whether there are multiple places or not.
It's a good idea, I think, to try to do it, because now is the time before there's a lot more redevelopment, infill, or whatever you call it, but also, we don't really know what we're doing as far, you know, I mean, I.
Yeah, ultimately, for example, if we, if we place something on the Lampman's property, we put a little Stormwater Official Map element and said, we think that there needs to be a future community facility, i.e. a subsurface stormwater treatment to deal with this historic property that has no treatment today, we would at some point need to work it into the capital budget, you know, estimate what the cost would be and, and maybe start putting this, putting aside some money and.
Which is all good ideas, Alex.
Well, it is, but I think the first step would be to go talk to the landowner and, you know, maybe talk to the state stormwater folks about whether that's really the right way to do it, because none of us are stormwater experts, maybe these are just ideas we're having because we've seen them done in one or two other projects, not because it's the best solution.
We're definitely going to be seeing a lot more of it down the road, don't you think, John? It's coming, I think, yeah, there's, without a doubt.
And I'm not sure that the state regulations as they are now constituted the new ones really take care of everything the way we want to.
Yeah, that's a off-sided concern that if we.
It should be a continuing project that we, we examine.
Right.
And I'm even wondering if there's a way to build in, I don't know, I guess it's not the same as the charge for new developments for fire department and police department charges.
Impact fees.
Right, those kind of impact fees, if there's a way to build in an, an impact fee associated with stormwater control and, and associated problems with, with a lot of water.
That's an interesting point.
And, and does that mean you can even ask retroactively in a way for any of the existing developments that don't have?
Well, sure, I mean.
The same, you guys need to put some in also.
We're getting a little off of official map land, but, but that's the way communities like Williston and South Burlington and Burlington and Shelburne, I think, maybe not Shelburne, are going in the, in the, in the sense of they are creating stormwater utilities within their communities, and they are, they are adding a, a surcharge onto the property tax bill based on impervious surface, because they, we have the technology to map that now from the air. So there's, there are any number of ways, special assessment districts, you know, more specific kinds of charges tied to actual infrastructure or impervious surface like I was talking about in South Burlington, any number of ways to assess a fee to deal with these things. It is important to note that, that properties with three acres or more of impervious surface are going to be required to, to get a permit from the state and presumably deal with in a best fix situation their stormwater, and the legislature passed a law this last year that gave the Agency of Natural Resources a little more time to promulgate those rules. I don't know that we have any sites like that in Heinsburg, I think the Cheese Plant might be, might be pretty darned close, maybe the schools actually, CBU, might be pretty close, although they have a, they may already have a stormwater permit, because I know they have stormwater treatment up there already. But my point is only, the state is moving towards capturing some of those properties, and whether that three acre threshold will ratchet down at some point, the town's got to play that sort of game of like, when do we step in and when, and how, when do we allow the, the state and private landowners to, you know, do it on, on those private properties?
And we've done that in some of our regulations already. We've put in requirements more strict than the state has.
Sure.
So that's.
But in terms of, you know, trying to implement treatment in the near term, and who's going to pay for that, whether that's a special assessment or private property owners, it's, it's a bit of, it's, it's complicated.
Yes.
I wonder if there would be space for it at the northwest corner of the Lyman Park. Seems like that's not used for soccer, and I would imagine it's out of the way of the baseball field.
Seems like an awfully good spot, because it would capture, if, it would capture a lot of the runoff, you know, from Lyman Meadows, from the church parking lot, maybe much of Lampman's, if, if the state would allow us to divert the stream, you know, to, to pass through some kind of treatment and then come out the other side cleaner, and I don't know the answer to that. That was what Andrea and I had hoped to do on the Cheese Plant property, but we never really got to ask that question, because they shot us down too quickly because there were wetlands and flood hazard area.
The only, the only other impediment I can think of there is, we've kind of faced this before, that, that Lyman Park is kind of stipulated as necessary for school space.
We'd have to run it by the school for sure.
So how much, I mean, is it 100% that they need, is it, you know?
Well, I think that's James' point, right, that doesn't seem like the northwest corner gets used.
Well, it doesn't matter whether it's used, it matters if, if the state thinks it.
Oh, I see what you mean, if it's based on an acreage calculation and not an actual use calculation. I, I don't, that's, that's a good point, Joe, I don't know the answer to that.
Right, so many, you know, so many kids in the school, you need so much, you know, square area.
So many square feet of, yeah, of rec field.
Hasn't that been the case right along?
I mean, that's.
Because it was a problem last time we did.
It, it has been, but what, what I'm not clear on is whether the state requirement is a pure square footage and they don't care which portion of that is actually utilized, or if it's based on actual usable, you know, used land.
Does the state require that there can't be an overlay use over part of that school assigned area?
I don't think we know.
For stormwater retention, for example, that would not discount that or remove that area from what the school needs to have.
Well, given that we already put number six on there, which already impacts a little slice of the southeast corner of Lyman Park, we should probably get that question answered before we adopt the official map, if it can actually happen. Does anybody have good contact on the school board, or if not, I can just call the Champlain Valley School District admin folks and see if they know.
They should.
Okay, I'll give them a ring.
I also wondered about, well, there's already a little bit on that same stream on the United Church parking, uh, United Church property, but I wonder about. But I wonder about. One of the, the lower of the two fields behind the church. It's, seems pretty unusable to me, as wet as it is. Uh, now we have Bistinett rec fields and the, the field closer to the parking lot, the town hall parking lot has been razed.
Yeah, so there's, uh, the flood hazard area does um, come into that lower part of the church's soccer field. Um, it, I don't think it would classify as wetland, but it's part of the flood hazard area. So again, I, we may need to have a, a little powwow with the state stormwater folks. To make sure that the places that our transportation consultant thought might be good places are actually viable places from the state's standpoint. Uh, number one is one of the, what I think of as one of the, the better places to deal with stormwater, behind the mobile station. Um, but it also is uh, close to Patrick Brook. And um, depending on how it's managed, mode or not, you know, might end up being mapped as wetland. Um, so I, I, I should probably talk, I should talk to them and find out whether um, some of these sites. Might be compromised in that way, and it might not be possible, you know, if the state were to say, it's great, you wanna use it for stormwater, but you can't. Gotta find a high and dry place to treat this stuff, which is tough, cause of course, you tend to treat stormwater. Where, where the water flows at the lower spots.
This is more complicated than we thought, don't you think?
I do, yeah, but that's, you know, that's part of the process. It, it, it makes sense to identify the appropriate areas for future community stormwater treatment. But um, you do wanna make sure that it's not so completely out of touch with what's possible that um, before you put it on a map.
Right.
I mean, what, what makes it somewhat tough, Marie, is, is there's no clear one right answer, right? There's pluses and minuses to everything and.
Each one is different.
You just have to, have to weigh it and decide, you know, what's, you know, what's gonna work best for what you're trying to achieve.
Yep.
And what's gonna fit best into, you know, the village, community, whatever, right?
It's really the time now to think of, to really, it's hard, but it's appropriate, I think.
So how far do we go in terms of proposing what the optional solutions are? We, we're not stormwater engineers.
You're layman, but you all got good heads on your shoulders.
Right.
Right?
Go so far.
Right, you know the lay of the land, you know, water doesn't run uphill, um, in, in this case, right? You don't know all the soil conditions, right, the best, the best you can do is, is, you know, know what you know and, and put it the best place. Um, you know, if you really wanna be picky about it, um, you don't even know how much uh, you know, stormwater treatment. You really need based on your, based on your impervious surface in the village, you know, you need more than you have, right?
I'll tell you, right beside the property that I own, somebody had to put something in and I'm real, just shocked at how big it is. It's like, whoa, I think we need a lot. And I, and I asked somebody about it and they said, well, it's for more than what you see there right now. Cause there's more to be built, but it's a lot for a little one acre lot, which maybe I don't understand. I know, I admit, I don't know a lot about that, but it's like, that's why I'm, I'm looking at the village thinking, oh my gosh. It's a lot, I mean.
Right, and you, I mean, the other thing considered here is, we're, we're, we're thinking about best fix, not ideal design.
Yeah.
Right?
But you've gotta have a certain amount of space to do it, and it, I'm thinking that it's becoming more space than maybe the rules were a while ago.
So it's possible that um, you know, maybe stormwater treatment areas uh, come off the map. In this round and go on at, in the next iteration. We, we, we haven't revised this map in nine years. We don't have to wait nine years before revisions, you know, we can, we can have the select board update it next year. And then work on bringing a stormwater personnel in to, you know, advise us on. Uh, not just possible places, but actually viable places.
My, my, my personal opinion on that is, don't pull, keep them, keeping them in there keeps it, you know. In, inside the public's awareness.
I agree.
Yeah, we need to do that now.
I agree, yeah, me too.
And we can, as in the future, we can define things better. We can take some things out that we do now, that we can, we found we can do it better.
Right. You know, if you know something isn't, you know, definitely is not gonna work today, then it doesn't belong on the map, but.
And that's kinda what Alex started the whole conversation.
Right, it's questionable whether number two should be on the map at all.
Right.
Where it is.
And frankly, number six, but number six is town owned, um, so. Even if the school has rights to it for the next ninety years, uh, you know, the town will be here after that, so.
I think this way we at least acknowledge that we recognize there's a need. That we may not solve it right now, but as you say, keep it in the public eye.
If, you know, if we wanna return to this immediately and, and get some advice and modify it, we can. But um, it's out there. Um, you know, something has been done, may not be enough, maybe in the non-optimal place. Right, so I think, I think we're back to the question, whether we really wanna remove two. Right, and if we remove two, do we wanna not remove it, but move it?
We don't know where to move it to.
Well, like I said, there's, there's, there's no absolute one right answer here. Right, and. You could, you could move it to a parking lot, you could move it to the northwest corner of, of Lyman Park. And, and, and have no more, no more to settle with, with the school board than you do right now with number six. Um, but you're acknowledging a, a square footage that is some reserve.
Just sounds like from what Alex told us at the beginning that the number two possibly isn't going to work.
Yeah.
Cause there's already wetlands there. It's definitely in that vicinity, though.
Do we, I mean, do we have a motion to? I'll say move number two, or remove number two.
I'll second that. Sorry.
No, you second, that's fine, we can discuss then. Do, do we know that? A stormwater retention area and a wetland can coexist?
So I'm gonna call the state and verify that, but what I was saying before was that um, that's, we got feedback that that was a. That was, that would be difficult or, or just was a bad idea, um, when Andrea Mercanti and I were trying to plan for something on the cheese plant property. That was within a wetland area, um, and flood hazard. And the, the, the folks who fund, who would provide funding for those kind of stormwater mitigation projects basically said. We're not gonna fund a project that's in that, yeah, that has that combination.
But that is in a flood area, which this is not.
Right.
And this is very small, would it, I, I know what that area looks like. But why, why do we say it's a wetland? Do, do we?
The, which area are you talking about now, John? Two, the, the bulb out area that you see on number two, if you were to walk behind the, the gas station, it's all cattails. There's a, there is a wetland, there is a wetland there where the drainage sort of backs up and has created a.
Right.
A wetland area.
Right, I'm just saying, that's not design, I, I'm asking, is that designated by some town? Or state authority that that's a wetland? So therefore, we can't do stormwater retention on it.
Well, so it's not.
It's just our impression, which may be right, it's wet, it's got all the right vegetation. I don't know whether there are any ducks hanging out in there, but there, but there are other wetland creatures certainly that are there.
Yeah, the definition of a wetland for state purposes doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with the critters. It's about water regime, soil type and wetland, obligate wetland vegetation, it would, it meets all those. It's, it has standing water and cattails, and so it's definitely a wetland. It's not a, it's not a significant enough wetland to have been captured in the mapping done by the state. Uh, so it, they, and it might remain a, what they call a class three wetland that they don't take jurisdiction over. Um, so these are, these are questions I can contact the state stormwater office and ask them about. And find out if, if, if it's, if it's really viable to do stormwater treatment in minor wetland areas like that.
That are not in flood plains, not, not in part of some bigger area.
Yeah, it's that question and the question of stormwater treatment, uh, constructed stormwater treatment in the, that are within a stream channel. A map stream channel, is that also off limits, or is that a possibility?
Be used somehow.
Cause that's what number two is as well, you can't see it, the green overlaps the blue, but there's.
Comes right through there.
I was gonna ask, do we know if this has always been a wetland? Or was it created by the runoff from Lyman Meadow?
So John's contention was that it was when the culvert was placed um, between the church parking lot. And the town's Lyman Park parking lot, that because the culvert was set too high.
Alright.
Water backed up behind it, and that's what has, that's what he said has created this uh, this little wetland area. It's not large, it's just a, it's just a small spot, but I think he, his feeling is that the, the, the stream slash swell. Holds more water than it normally, than it did in the past, and that that little wetland area is because of that.
I, um, I can't really tell from this map, the, the property line for um, the gas station. Is that where the two is, is that one long, um, from one sixteen to Lyman Park? Is that all theirs?
No, so, yeah, there's a lot of colors and symbols going on, it's hard to tell. So they own to the red line, which is a future proposed sidewalk. The property line is essentially on the south side of that um, sidewalk. At, which you can't see it because of the green is coincident with a blue line, there's that strange swell that runs through there.
So.
So the area to the north of the red line, Maggie, is the Lyman Park condos, there are eight condominiums there.
Alright.
That little black existing sidewalk is actually their sidewalk, that's right in front of their buildings.
That could contribute to the runoff too.
Yeah.
Well, sure, but I mean, just like the roofs of their condos and probably most significantly the road. Uh, that's between their side, the sidewalk and, and the uh, stream.
There's a fair, good sized parking lot there too.
Yeah, for, for those units. Good sized puddle too.
Yes.
Yep.
Dream of.
It's all connected. Um, okay, so I have some homework to do, but I heard, I think, a motion that was seconded. But what was the motion, was it a motion to remove two or move two, or was it a motion to do one of those two things? I think Marie thought you made the motion, Joe.
Yes, he did, that's what I thought.
I think Joe was asking for someone to make a motion.
I was asking, yeah.
Then you have to click, now we've gone on and I've lost track of it, exactly what you said.
What, what I said was, does someone, would, would someone like to make a motion to either move or remove number two?
Okay, sorry.
Motion to move two to the northwest corner of Lyman Park, second.
Okay, would you move the whole two or just the bulb out of two?
Well, I think.
Just try to be.
Yeah.
I, I guess what I'm hearing is that. And based on the width of it on the map and my recollection of the area. The width of it on the map without the bulb would be. The cattail filled ditch.
Yeah, essentially, it's that.
What I'm hearing is, we can't do it, anything there anyway.
Yeah, okay, so basically the whole thing, these same, same square footage. Alright, any other discussion?
It doesn't look like that'll fit, if you take two and squash it around into a different shape. I don't see how it can only be at the northwest corner of Lyman.
And you're, John's absolutely right, it won't.
No, it's not, it's more, you're right.
This area, we're talking about a small area here.
You're right, but.
It'll look more like number six, it's kind of a, a pie slice out that widens maybe at the corner.
Yep.
I mean, so maybe we don't replace it square footage to square footage, but we show it as an, an area. That should be dealt with that way.
Yep.
I mean, positionally, it makes more sense, it's downhill, right, it captures more of the drainage area. Um, of course, if we move number two up to the northwest corner and we find out that there's a committed square area that's to the school, that's everything. We're in double trouble, cause we have two and six there, um, so be it.
Yeah, so let's move it and we have to deal with that if it's wrong.
I agree with that.
Alright, hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Alright, looks like we did something tonight regarding number two.
So there were some comments on sidewalks, um, and I, I guess I, I agreed with those. Like uh, in front of Jero's, that there isn't, isn't a sidewalk marked as a future sidewalk? Is there, is there a reason that we don't have one there?
Uh, I don't think so, other than it's hard.
It would be very difficult for Jero to operate and have a sidewalk there, I have to.
Oh, I, I guess I think we should have it on the map, you know, for, in, in case the use there changes.
Yeah, it's a good point, if, if for some reason the property is redeveloped, that would be the opportunity for the town to say, great, now that you're redeveloping. You gotta accommodate this thing.
I mean, the other thing, I mean, does the definition of sidewalk have to be, you know, above grade, can it be?
There already is one there if you wanna say that, because it's all tarred.
But it's not marked.
I'm, I'm.
It's not marked, I know.
But it could be marked.
Could be marked.
And, and, and still serve them, I, I think.
You're right, in which, in which case it doesn't, doesn't impede the use of the property behind it.
Yeah.
Right, granted, you know, that's, that's more road cut than we would ever want, right, in the future. But, you know, it's a pre-existing business and. Right, so at the same time, it's marked, so that if that is redeveloped at some point.
Yep.
Right, that's maintained.
So is everybody on the same page with James then, per that comment you got? Cause I can just add that to the map and then send a, send a note to the Jero's saying FYI.
Well, plus additional property owners, uh, what do we got there?
I think they, I think they own the whole thing, yeah.
Different.
There's a bunch of different properties, but I think they, I think they own all of them.
That used to be all under the same type of ownership, but I think it's, it's still Jero family, but maybe different.
Different branches of the family.
Yeah, yeah, like the two boys that run the body shop now own the apartment buildings.
Well, I'll just add it and then, and then get in touch with them, so they know something's changed, if they wanna come in and ask questions.
No, I think that's a good way to put it, they could live with that.
And how about the, uh, it was suggested that there be a sidewalk on the, um. The east side of Mechanicsville Road.
Andrea made that suggestion at the last meeting, right? Yeah, and so the, the current official map does show that, so that came off in this draft. Um, I, I don't think you discussed that, I think that was, that was your planner. Um, and, and so the reason I didn't put it on there, happy to add it back if that's what you'd like to see. Um, was. I know that in Essex Junction, um, which is a very pedestrian friendly community and kids walk to school. And they have crosswalks and crossing guards and all that jazz, it's where I grew up. Um, they've actually taken, started taking out some sidewalk in places where it's on both sides of the road. And there isn't a lot of pedestrian use on both sides of the road, and instead they invest in crosswalks to get people safely to the one side. That they can actually afford to maintain. Um, part of it is based on usage, I think a lot of it is just a fiscal decision, they can't afford to maintain sidewalks on both sides of every road. And so my thought was, hey, this is a. And so my thought was, hey, this is a long stretch, I'm sure any development that happens, substantial development that happens on the Quinn property. Is probably gonna have some sidewalk, but, but do we wanna have two parallel sidewalks all the way at Mechanicsville or, or not?
I mean, just curious, where does the crosswalk go if you don't have a sidewalk? A lawn?
A lot of people.
How do people get there?
Yeah, that's a good point.
A lot of people already cross at the shopping center below, this way. You know, I don't know what the shopping center is called, but.
Yeah.
That's, that crosswalk, I see people crossing there all the time.
But if you're, I mean, if you're at Thistle Hill or, you know, you wanted to go north, you know, from Mulberry Lane North, you gotta cross there.
Yeah, in reality, people are gonna, people right now are crossing, not in a crosswalk, just whenever they can scamper across the street.
Quinn property that, you know, will probably develop at some point, it's owned that way.
It would certainly be more consistent with the rest of the village to just plan for a sidewalk on that side of Mechanicsville. I know that there's at least one resident on Hawk Lane who, uh. Has wondered in the past why there isn't a sidewalk connecting their neighborhood. I mean, there is, but they have to cross Mechanicsville to get to it.
There's no sidewalk on that. On Hawk Lane that goes up into that.
Into that neighborhood, no.
They walk there, they walk in the street.
They walk in on their, on their private road, and then they get to Mechanicsville and they have to cross Mechanicsville, yeah. I, I will say, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, because there's a, a vehicle intersection there, that could be the place then that you would put the.
For the crosswalk.
Even though there's not a sidewalk on the east side, that's, that's the point where an accident could definitely happen.
Similarly with Quinn, if there were a, um, a principal point of access into that property on the, on the east side. That would be a logical point to bring a sidewalk from the neighborhood down and then have a crosswalk to get to the, the, the primary Mechanicsville Road one. With that said, I actually, it's funny, this came up, I talked to, uh. Someone who was looking at a property that's for sale next to the Quinn property, right next to the cemetery, um.
Oh, the house that got remodeled?
Maybe, I think of it as the house with the, with the giant radio antennas, cause for many years.
Right, I think.
The folks who lived there were, had big antennas, anyways, it's, it's for sale and somebody was looking at it and, and their comment to me was. They wanted to know, um, what was going on village planning wise. And they said, we like, we like it, we wanna move to Heinsburg, we don't live here now, we like it because it's close to the village, but we don't like it, cause there's no sidewalk. And we're for, we're afraid to send our kids across Mechanicsville Road with, you know, all the traffic that zips down that road, so. That's not a Heinsburg resident, that's just somebody who's looking to move here and, and may not, because there isn't a sidewalk on that side.
I don't think it hurts to put it on the map.
Right.
And you're, you're, we're, we're zoned for more development in this region.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? And, and like I said, it's on the current map, so it's not a big deal to just add it back in. Okay, will do.
I think originally the sidewalk was supposed to be on that side of the road.
It's funny, this sidewalk was actually supposed to be over by the La Platte River when it first started. It was gonna be the connection from Charlotte Road up to, um, Shelburne Falls Road. A lot, partially along the La Platte, that was the original federal grant that we got, and then there were, yeah, whenever, long, long time ago. And it ran into some landowner issues, and so the whole thing got redesigned to go up Mechanicsville Road.
There were a lot of land issue, landowner issues on Mechanicsville Road too.
Yes.
Rocky worked really hard on that.
But it's funny how projects like that evolve, that was like a thirty year sidewalk project.
Alright, the, the multiple entries to, to Prags, I would say do it.
Okay, add that one back in, the one, uh, the one, uh, at the end of Ballard's Corner Road. Got it?
It's actually a bike path in the beginning too, not a sidewalk, I think, Alex.
The one that was supposed to go, yeah, I think it was a multi-use path and.
Yeah, I think we all call, use the word bike path for some reason, that's what I recall, but.
Now, that's, you're talking about along Shelburne Falls.
Yeah, the La Platte and.
That you're talking about, this part here.
Yeah.
Goes in front of Weiner's house.
No, 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 down, um, what, behind, more to the, you said the La Platte.
It was this historic path that, that was supposed to go up the La Platte between Charlotte Road and Shelburne Falls Road.
Yep.
Alright, so I got the Ballard's Corner connection, yep, add that back in. Um, yeah, what else did you hear at last, the last meeting that you want me to make changes on? Anything besides what you just?
Wasn't there discussion, or maybe Andrea put it in writing? Maybe I saw it in the notes about connecting to Prague's park. As we had shown it as, that's what Lenore, I know.
Yeah, yeah, that's what Joe just said, he said, let's, let's add back, keep what we have, but add back the connection that's shown on the current official map.
Which is the one from the north that comes down.
Yeah.
This one along Shelburne Falls Road seems to me to be a tough one to accomplish.
Yeah, Lenore said she walked it and the terrain and the.
The terrain is almost impossible. I mean, you'd have to back away from the road to, cause it, you couldn't get between the terrain. When it goes up and the road to get a sidewalk in, you'd, you'd have to move away and get up higher.
She didn't seem to think that, that what she, what she conveyed to me was that it could be done, it would be difficult. Because of the drainage swell and the stone wall on the former Weiner property.
Yeah.
But that once you got to the Jeprags, uh, property line.
Then you could get away from.
It wouldn't be difficult to punch the trail up, you know, up the hill at that point. Um, it's just that that segment getting to the property line is going to be difficult.
What I'm saying, and I thought she was talking about, is there a way that we could bring. A path from the Bissonette Rec area, that, that red dotted path that's there now. Could we bring that up and, and connect in without having to do this piece across the front of, uh. Wainers and whoever owns the next property.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall her recommending that, John, um, but, okay. That'd be a different, a different way to think of it.
She was looking at trying to connect to the path that we were showing around the Bissonette Field. And, and not doing the one across the front of Wainers and the next door neighbor, because of the difficulty with. Getting it in there, fitting it in between the, the road and the wall and.
Yeah, like I said, I don't recall her suggesting that connection. Um, I think the only one she mentioned in her memo was the connection from the end of Ballard's Corner Road back into Jeprags. The way the current official map shows, but I understand what you're saying, you're saying another way to do it would be to go from the Rec Fields directly north.
Yeah, right.
Through the.
Right, and then you hit Jeprags right away.
Right.
And you make a crossing there.
Right.
I think it was Andrea who mentioned that at the last meeting, coming from the Bissonette Rec fields and stuff.
That's, that's what I recall, when I watched, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched all of that and.
So, that wasn't Lenore, that was Andrea?
No, it wasn't Lenore saying that, Lenore, Lenore. Agreed with the one along Shelburne Falls Road and then showed the one coming down from the north onto the extension of Ballard's Road.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to.
About this other route.
And, I, I mean, I understand the logic of that, uh, it would have to cross a stream. Um, and it would, you know, it would be in a new place, one that our trails committee hasn't provided any input on. So, we probably wanna run it by Lenore and her committee.
Oh, yeah, it definitely needs to be put in the loop for, with them.
And I'm not sure who that landowner is, that's.
Who are you talking about, Alex?
Just to the west of the Weiner, of Brad's property, um. South, south side of Shelburne Falls Road, is it, is it John, uh, Tom Lyman's property?
Who are these properties, cause if we're gonna try to come from here to there.
Oh.
Those were, came out of Lyman's land that have been developed in just fifteen years.
They're individual houses.
Yeah, at least, yes.
It seems to me like as it's mapped now, it's not that much out of the way and.
This is Weiner's here.
A lot of it, we already have a.
Who's, who's been on?
One, I don't, I don't know their name, but it was part of this Ballard's.
So, you're saying the stone wall is just.
Trail, it's meant for exercise, longer is better.
Weiner's house.
Yeah.
And then on. One of these, this is where, is this where the, um.
Yeah.
Our building is for the water?
Yeah.
So, that's was Brad Weiner's, where his garage is, across.
Across, across from the house.
Yep, and, yep, yes.
Right, and there's a temper, there's a gravel, there's a gravel road.
Yes, it comes down into here. It goes right along this end of his property.
Basically drive all the way back.
Probably, yeah.
And that's how you go to the Rec Fields. Right, or do you, no.
No, I don't know, I haven't driven to the Rec Fields.
To go to the Rec Fields, you go in where the medical facility is, and then keep going beyond that. But to your right is where the new water treatment facility is. And Brad's garage.
Yes.
And so forth.
Yes, it'd be nice if the town could acquire that property.
It has been suggested to the family, yes.
Suggested it many times before, when we were building the building, that they should try, have gotten some language. Before he passed away sooner than we expected.
So, we've been talking about a suggestion Andrea made to connect the trail that goes by the recreation field. Directly north to Jeprags Trail.
But then, are you gonna give up all of this over here?
No, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't either.
Leave all of that.
So, it's gonna split or why, would you say? Yeah.
So, so, now that you two are oriented, James and Joe were having a, trying to have a comment on that.
I'm sorry.
What, what were you saying, James, you, did you think that?
It's redundant, I mean, it seems like it's not very far out of the way to go a little like that to get to it. And we've got an, you know, a vehicular. Access and why not just put a path along the, the, the drive to, uh, the Rec area?
And, and go out to Falls Road that way, and then come back along, west along Falls Road to go into Jeprags. Yeah.
My kind of, it's an exercise path, longer is better.
Yeah, right, it's.
I mean.
Right, we don't need to do straight line connections.
Right.
I, 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 I could see that, but this, this idea of coming from the north down, that's. Topographically that fits.
I think that would be good.
You know, the, 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 the path from, from Ballard's Corners makes sense, cause the library is there, and so maybe, you know, maybe you get a book. And hike up the hill to read.
Yeah.
Well, and we've always, everybody's always wanted connectivity to the library. That's always been a big complaint since we acquired it. Nice that somebody bought the property for us, but it was, it's a long, was a long ways away from any connectivity.
Right, wasn't in the.
Can't always get what you want.
At all.
I know, no, I'm very happy, it wasn't me, I've just heard it from a lot of people. But, that's slowly changing.
It was a very generous, uh, generous gift.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
Even though this isn't part of the village area, I keep thinking about the discussions we've had. About the Richmond Road where. The concentration of people live in, in the mobile homes.
Yep.
And we've talked about that intersection, that's now this big curve that heads toward Richmond. And then a yield sign coming off North Road. And we've talked about recreational space up there for the, that concentration, that's. I don't know, Alex, maybe you know, that's one of the denser areas of town.
Yes.
Truly, in terms of how many units and what size area and how many people live there.
Absolutely.
We've had these circles around intersections in the village. Do we wanna say something about that intersection up there between. North Road and the Richmond Road that.
Andrea wanted to talk. Andrea brought that up too, John, but.
Part of a larger official map.
Yeah, it's way far off.
This map, this map tried to concentrate on the village area.
Yeah, but.
Right.
And if we're, if we're gonna start to reach out, then we oughta, we oughta think about more than, than North Richmond Road.
Right.
I don't know that we would, I don't know that it needs to be on the official map, even if, even if we were to expand the map to cover that area. I think that whatever intersection improvement we might do there, would, we have the necessary right of way. Because so many of the town roads all come together there, that, that we, we can do it. We, we don't need to preserve our option to do it, cause there, nobody could develop in there anyways, you know, with three rod roads intersecting. And I, I don't, I don't know about you, uh, we haven't had a traffic engineer look at it or study the options, but. I look at that intersection and I don't see a roundabout that would take up a lot of space or anything very sophisticated. I see just making it a more traditional four-way stop or, you know, doing something to avoid that. Um, that sort of high speeds, uh, curve with the yield.
There has been an accident there, killed some, one of them.
I, every time I drive through it, I think that I'm, I'm worried about whether somebody's gonna come out and, and hit me, yeah.
Very fast moving.
But my point is, I don't, I don't know that it needs to be on the official map, it probably needs to be in the select boards and the road foremen's plan somewhere. Like, you know, in twenty twenty, we're gonna fix this, or in twenty nineteen, we're gonna hire consultant to tell us what we should do with it. Uh, as opposed to trying to, as opposed to official map, which is more about, um, preserving the town's option to do something on a pri, you know, on private property. But you might disagree, man, I, I don't, I think there's a lot of room up there for us to work within the town road right of way.
You could, I mean, if you just simply took out the curb and, and made it, made it a, a four-way, you'd actually, you'd actually have land left over. That you didn't need anymore.
Big stormwater pond there for the end of Texas.
There you go.
When, when you, when you eliminate that curve, what do you do with that piece of land? It lends itself to being the park, because you gotta cross the road to get to it.
Would be interesting to think about what, what would happen there, it's not dissimilar.
Park and ride, because the park, people are parked there a lot.
Be good for that, it's not dissimilar to what happened at Silver Street.
The north.
Instead of following the curve, if you go straight up to hit the intersection, they park there on the gravel.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so anyways, um, getting back to official map, do we wanna discuss any more comments? I, I kinda like Rolf to be here, you know, and it's, it's quarter after eight now and he's not gonna show. We're an hour and fifteen minutes into this meeting.
Okay.
The, the, there was a question about this area for public use in, in the, uh. Off of Mechanicsville there, about the.
Letter G.
Have to be that size or in that location? Should we allow some flexibility as to where it gets placed? I thought that was kind of implied on all of these.
Yeah.
Uh, brown, orangey brown areas that. Discussion can be had with develop, with any developer as to the exact location of that.
I asked that question, it must be a meeting you were at, and then Andrea asked the same question the day she showed up. And Alex assured me that there would be flexibility for developer.
You wanted that, you wanted that written into the map, and so there's a note at the top of the map that indicates that. And on the community facility description, there's again, it's repeated. My perspective is that this is a legal regulatory document, so. Um, if a developer came in and said, I wanna take G and put it down here on the southern corner, you know, the southern part. Um, the DRB would say, no, not unless you go get this map revised. And there is a process by which a developer, while they're in the DRB review, can go to the planning commission, get concurrence. And go to the select board and get concurrence, and then it can be, that minor revision can be made. If that same developer said, I wanna give you G, but I wanna shift it, you know, fifty feet in one direction or so. I think that is what's covered with these approximate language.
Same intent.
Right.
In terms of the shape of it, it doesn't have to be a rectangle.
Have to be a rectangle, if it was a little different, and I think the DRB could say, yeah, that's fine. It's only when it's grossly different that you would need to go through that, that revision process.
And there is a process.
And there's a process, yeah, and it's not the same process as, 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 as going through the whole official map revision. It's a, it's a slightly, uh, slightly easier process to go through.
And we did, however, want it to be perhaps closer to the sem, to the cemetery, wasn't that discussed?
That's why it was put there, yeah.
Up at that height.
Yeah, right.
Apparently there was some comments, maybe you guys have talked about this, cause I didn't show up on time. Uh, how to get to the beach at the, at Lake Iroquois?
Andrea.
Again, that's outside of
Yes.
Yeah.
The village area.
That's another, another project we kind of talked about, that was my reflection.
Yeah, that's.
It's a great one.
Nice way to put it.
It's all good. But another project, not this one. She did bring that up too.
No, I, I remember bringing it up.
Yep.
I'd have to think about how much that would get used if we were to do that.
Well, I don't know, a lot of people like to walk around that lake, and it's a nightmare on Richmond Road, that's all I can say, all I know that I hear. So that's another whole discussion.
Okay.
And then there was discussion last meeting about the Farmall Drive and the connection of the east side or west side highway and so forth.
That's right, Joe wants to ta, no, we haven't, Joe wants to table that until Rolf can be here, because he submitted some comments about maybe an alternative way to do that.
Yeah.
With bollards that go up and down with the code, I thought that was pretty cool.
They're pretty cool.
I, I think I, I think Rolf has sent me like video.
I was wondering how those work in like the first ice storm.
I know, but I've seen them in northern parts of Europe.
Really?
Where they get weather just like us, and they're big, they're, the bollards are like this big around when they come up out of the ground.
Right, Heinsberg becomes a gated community, or a posted community, literally.
Very conceptual.
Well, there's plenty of time to talk about that at your next meeting.
All right, so you know, shall we move on to item four? So, village area open space design standards, draft seven. Town council and peer review.
Right, lots of, lots of changes if you were looking at the track changes version, which there are extra copies of over there. All the red, I'll give you a clean version as well, in case you prefer looking at not so much busyness. But it incorporates most of the changes that we discussed two meetings ago that the town's council had provided. I think you had, you discussed some of those and weren't in agreement with the town attorney on a couple, and so I didn't make those. But most of them are in, in there, and then there are a variety of other changes that came from the peer review. And I, I am happy to take notes as you talk about each individual one. It might be just as easy to, you know, just talk about it more globally, and if you have thoughts on how to, you know, changes you like or don't like, or additional changes you wanna see made. The idea is to get this to a, a mature enough point that we can start the community engagement process, and I think this, these public open space design standards are aligned enough with the official map in terms of what the ultimate objective is, that it would make sense for you guys, when you get to the point of warning a formal public hearing on proposed changes, to, to put these together in the same sort of package, like, we're updating this and we're, we're proposing these.
You're talking about the sheet that says village area design standards at the top, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, Joe, are we, we can make our comments?
Yeah, that's what meetings are for.
So, non-exclusive, I think we've talked about non-exclusive before. Non-exclusive means this is, this is for a public open space. From that first paragraph, the second line has non-exclusive in it, what, what are we saying there? It means that there can't be a sign that says, or a lock on a gate that keeps people out who aren't in that neighborhood, for example?
The definition of non-exclusive is not restricted to the person, group, or area concerned.
And we have that in the definition section?
That, this, no, this, that is the, the, you know, Merriam-Webster's definition. The, this first section is the def, is in the definition section of what public open space is defined to be. The word non-exclusive was something suggested by the town attorney to just further embellish, that's not the right word, the term general public use. So, the, yes, my understanding is the idea is that you want the general public to be able to use it, you do not want a neighborhood association to be able to say, this is only for us. Or, this is only for people who are part of our club, or this is only for the patrons of this restaurant, that sort of thing.
So, what I thought, and then I thought of it the way you just talked about it, Alex, and the way Attorney Root talked about it. Can't we just say something like it's, this land is open to general public, to the general public within and beyond Heinsberg?
Well, I'll be honest with you, John, I thought it read fine with just general public use. I didn't think the word non-exclusive was necessary, but he's the attorney, I'm not, so I just put it in there, because I think you guys talked about this a couple of meetings ago.
We, we did talk about it.
Scratching your head a little bit about it too. It doesn't have to be there, these are, these are, these are your words, I don't think David would fall on his sword for that, he was just trying to.
I, I don't think it would hurt to say that this public open space is open to, to the general public in and beyond Heinsberg.
But, but what's the benefit of saying in and beyond Heinsberg?
Why can't you just say open to the public? That means everybody, don't you think?
Yeah, that would work too.
Yeah, and it's simple.
Non-exclusive just didn't
You don't like that word.
Say enough, I guess I don't like that word.
Yeah, I think you don't.
Is everybody else of the same mind that non-exclusive muddies it?
Yeah, I don't like it.
Legalistic.
It sounds.
It's quirky.
Yeah.
All right, I will strike non-exclusive.
Public, as in available for use by, you know, everyone in, you know, town, city, state, blah, 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 blah. No, no requirement for residency, et cetera, et cetera.
Don't have to show a card.
Right.
Yeah.
Your resident card.
I also didn't, if, if we're talking about words we don't like, can we change nexus to just relationship, or?
This is in the middle of the page one, on the, the paragraph that starts size and location. Type and design of public open space shall have a nexus to the nature of the proposed, so you wanted to say shall have a relationship?
Relationship, I mean, isn't that, when, when I look up the
Yeah, I would have to look nexus up. Nexus Lexus.
I'm happy to change it to relation.
If, if that still
I agree.
Says what
Yeah.
we're trying to say.
Yep. Relationship or connection?
Or connection, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Connection, because relationship is more human to human. I think.
Okay, so the type and design of public open space shall have a connection to the nature of the proposed development?
Connect, I, I think relationship works better, but I'm, I'm used to thinking of relationships as an architect, so I'm thinking of aesthetic relationships and functional relationships and
Whereas some of us think of it as people, maybe.
Not just, not just human relations.
You okay with that? Okay.
As I was looking at this again, I was worried about the residential development being tied to dwelling unit, not, no uh, not taking into account the size, just seemed like this would
Right, Rolf had initially talked about making it tied to number of bedrooms.
Right, this would encourage fewer, larger you, homes.
Because they would have to, because there would be less open space required than for
If they did more, larger single-family homes, rather than apartments or affordable housing, or smaller, smaller things, I, I guess, I mean, in my mind, I think we should be encouraging more smaller dwelling units rather than larger ones. So if a developer did all large single-family homes, then they would fit less of them on and be able to provide less public open space. Is there, is there, are there other things preventing that in our regulations?
This is not the right place to do that, this is a place where you could, it could be influenced by that, but this would be a very tangential way to say, we want higher density, smaller units, because this is not, that's not what this section is about. But your question is are there other places in the regs where we either incentivize or encourage more density? There are, the density section, I think it's 2.4, talks about, you know, this is the base density, and we encourage you to build to preferably this, and preferably the maximum density, including, you know, various bonuses. We give bonuses for smaller dwelling size units. But there isn't anything explicitly, anything else explicitly in the regulations that says, you know, we prefer or we don't prefer single-family home on, on, single-family homes on large lots. But that, I, I would, I would not recommend doing that through this provision, because this, that's not what this provision is really getting at. But I, I understand what you're saying. A developer who does ten lots on ten acres has to provide 2,000 square feet of open space. That, the, if that same ten acres was a hundred units,
Half acre size.
Then they'd have to do
More open.
20,000 square feet of open space with, for the same land area. But I think, one, this is just easy and easier than, than tying it to bedrooms, which is what Rolf had originally suggested. But two, we know there are gonna be more people, the more dwelling units you create. And whether some of those people are single, or two people, or, you know, small family or large family. They all, they all are gonna benefit by this public open space.
All right.
At, at the same time, there is, there is kind of, those two, two of our goals are in conflict with one another in terms of producing lower cost housing and housing that appeals to elderly, i.e. people who don't have families. Children, full of children, there are just two of them, or one of them. And yet, this is saying, as you just explained, you have to provide more open space if you build more houses, even though they're occupied by fewer people. Not to say that elderly and you know, families that don't have kids, that are just adults, shouldn't have recreation space also.
I mean, if, if we switch from square area to bedrooms, I mean, I almost look at the two as very similar to each other, I mean, I, I think there's the same problem. If I, you know, if I put four bedrooms into a house, but I put the house on a, a larger piece of land, right, I mean, my, my square footage of building per, you know, area is less, and, and you end up with less, and whether you measure that in bedrooms or measure that in square feet, you still have the same basic problem, if someone wants to build on a larger lot, right, then their requirement for open space goes down.
But that larger unit, that larger lot is private now.
Yes.
Not public.
Yes, there, there, there's a, there's a difference in, in the type of space, but from a formulation point of view, if you were just to swap, you know, X many square feet with so many bedrooms in the equation, I think you come to the same result. You have the same basic conundrum. Right, and I, I'd agree with Alex, I mean, I think the way you encourage smaller dwelling units in, in a, in a bigger mix of dwelling units is you zone your area, right, to either require that, or incentivize that, so that developers would like to do that. And, and yes, they're gonna have to spend, you know, more area on open space, given this regulation, and, and maybe you need to take a look at, you know, the density bonuses or requirements that you put on the zone, right, to try and drive the type of housing you want. But to me, I, I think what Alex make, Alex says makes sense is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tinker with this regulation in order to drive the housing mix that you want, because it's like a second order effect, right? If you really want that, right, and you want a definitive, put it in the zoning district as, I want, you know, X percent this type of building, or, you know, or, or make it so sweet a deal that developer says, I, you know, it just makes economic sense to me to, to do this.
Right, monkey would allow densities so that projects that have smaller units get more, and projects with larger units get less. And that, and that tells a developer, if I wanna get my forty units, I can do it easily with one, two bedroom, but if I, if I want those forty units and I wanna build four bedrooms, single-family homes, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna have a hard time getting it.
I, I, I agree with everything you said, Joe, that is the way to control that item. I think this is a secondary effect that it might have. It's not the place to try to control it, though.
Yeah.
In terms of density.
I mean, I, you know, on, on the other hand, you know, if you think about a, a bigger apartment building, you know, that's exactly the kind of, you know, development that needs more open space, because there's less of it, you know, in the footprint of the, of the design itself.
Right.
So.
I know how there is in the country, there's a lot of that happening. Like they have the rooftop open for everybody.
I don't know if that would be non-exclusive, I don't know. I, I don't want, I don't want John Q. Public on my roof, okay, I, I think that's reasonable.
It's for the people that live in the building to use and bring their friends.
I understand, but.
And if you wanna, bigger, you live in a small apartment, very small, but you could have, sign up to have this public room.
Yeah.
But other people from the public couldn't come in.
That's right, it's not public, open, open, public.
Correct.
Yeah.
Somewhere here, I should have made a note where there's a, there's a statement about fencing around utility structures, switching stations, whatever.
Yes, it's on page
Where is that?
Page three. And it's in the middle of the page. It's a paragraph that begins above-ground utility.
Well-screened, which you, yeah, year-round registration or fencing. Could we say opaque fencing? You could put up a cyclone fence, what I call a cyclone fence, a wire fence that's totally open.
You can see through.
You can totally see through.
Well, I, I think you could say that.
Doesn't have to be a board wall.
You could say that, but I think that, I think that the intent is clearly articulated in the sentence, with, that it shall be well-screened in the first place, so I, I don't think.
Screening means screening, means screening.
I don't think a DRB would look at a chain link fence and say, you screened it, all you did was protect it, you know?
Yeah.
So I think there's a common sense factor that would come into play. My problem with further
Limiting what they built.
You limit some options, somebody might come up with a very attractive option that's not opaque, but still does the job. And you wouldn't wanna preclude that if, if the board looked at it and said, yeah, that, that screens it properly, you know what I mean?
Yeah. In, in, in one of these cases too, what we're talking about is utility cabinets, right? Go find me a utility cabinet that has a fence around it. It, it's counter, it's counter to the use of the utility cabinet, they have to get in there. I, I just don't think fencing is a I, I just don't think fencing is a um. A reasonable, a, a reasonable thing to do in, in those instances.
I haven't seen much of it all the way around, but I have seen somewhere that a fence is used on one side.
Or an evergreen hedge.
The one I'm thinking of is actually here in Heinsberg, so the UVM medical facility. They have a, a utility cabinet right in front of their building and they've used evergreen, you know, screening around that. But on the east side of their building, they, they had, um. I, I don't know if they're HVAC units or what they are, but they had uh additional units there. They're not like. Green Mountain Power Utility Cabinets, but we talked to them and said. You, it's not required in your permit, but do you think you could put some screening up there? And they're like, sure. And so they planted some, um, plants. And then for some reason they took them out. I hope I'm not dreaming this up, cause I'm pretty sure if you go look at it tomorrow, you'll see it. Instead, they put up a fence in front of those. There's, it doesn't screen it from the parking lot, but from Shelburne Falls Road. But just, it helps, it helps screen it. So I agree with Joe, I think you, you're unlikely to be able to fence all the way around a, a. Power utility cabinet, cause you gotta have access to it, but you might, fencing might be used as part of the screening on a side. On maybe a side that's the more important side.
The telephone company screened some of their remote locations for their switching stations. One at the intersection of uh Gilman Road and Lewis Creek Road. And they planted some cedars, which make great screens. And they can park next to them, drive in behind them, they can get right to the. Equipment itself, open the doors up, do all their servicing, which certainly needs to happen.
There are specific kind of fencing? I don't know what they've done over, where you've mentioned Alex, that the medical center, but.
No, that fencing is uh. Yeah, I think it's probably uh. Plaster wood. Yes, it, it, I find it to be attractive, but I, I, like I was telling John, I think it's. If the purpose is to provide screening, it's nice to, to leave their, leave some flexibility so that if. They wanna have some open slats and, and it still does the job, or they wanna incorporate some vegetation with the fencing. Rather than specifying that it be. A stockade fence or, you know, completely makes the utility structure invisible.
I've seen a number of places, construction sites. Where a cyclone fence is installed, a very secure protective fence. And then some kind of phony green leaf. Matting or something is woven in among the openings so that it. From a distance driving past, it looks like green uh leaves. And if you go up to it, it's, they're plastic and, you know, they're, they're not leaves at all, but you can't see through them. I mean, if you go right up to them, you can, you know, see a little hole.
Well, and, and on, in fairness, I think. With the language broad like this, that, that could be a possibility. As opposed to create a, a beautiful fence to look at. So if that's not to your liking, Barbara, um, you know, we might wanna be more specific, but.
That the, that the, whatever grows on the, on the cyclone fence has to be organic. It has, has to be a living, organic thing.
Well, there was that email I sent out today, I've sent it to you, but got the message, you weren't there, so I forwarded it, but. Sun Common is joining with another company in New York and they, some, they're proposing. Beneath their standing solar arrays to plant wildflower seeds. And with paths that people can walk on, enjoy the flowers and.
Right, helps the pollinators and all that.
So that's.
Good stuff.
All right, any other comments?
There were somewhere recently, maybe Middlebury, a utility cabinet with beautiful artwork on it. I thought, oh, that's pretty nice.
Yeah, there's quite a few of them in Burlington now. Yep, it's a nice alternative to uh having to plant stuff all around it or put a fence up around it, just make it look pretty.
We ought to have a real utility cabinet shaped like cows.
On page four, right at the top. The, I guess the very first bullet point. Projects occupants shall have access to other public open space within one half mile of the project site. So if we applied that rule to the land that potentially can still be. Built upon in, in our village area. What, what does that half, half mile radius look like? You know, if you pick any one of these locations, would, is there going to be another? Public space within a half mile? May- maybe so, but. Have you, have you actually done some kind of?
Yeah, I, I did drag a radius around, um, but. Uh, trying to explain it to you without showing you is a little hard. I can say that the, the northern portion of the Village Northwest District. You know, up by the UVM Medical Facility and those areas. Uh, the half mile radius certainly sweeps in Japrags, which is, you know, a public open space.
It's right there.
I think that if you considered the Bisnet Rec Field, uh, Rec Area to be a public open space, then basically that whole district. Covered.
If you come up into.
I'm not sure about the Village Northeast District, uh, across the road over by NRG. I'm not sure that that half mile sweep would, depending on where you were, would, would.
And what about uh the Mechanicsville Road?
To be a public open space, it would, it would certainly. Take care of all of that.
Might fall into the category of like, that's the school and. In the same way, we can't use the playground on our.
Facilities aren't really open to the public uh most of the time. They seem to be in daylight hours. They're mostly used by the school. So I didn't do the half mile, so it's a good question, John. I didn't do the half mile. With the thought of trying to make sure that all these projects would have, would cut, was covered. I was thinking from a walkable standpoint. Like a half mile is often used as a, as a reasonable walking distance to get to.
Most people would go that far.
Yeah, may, a mile might be too far, but a half a mile is usually within a five minute walk or so.
I, I had no problem with a half, I just wondered how, what that implied in the future, if, if we did all those arcs. Have we got most of it? Maybe we don't get.
It's not hard for me to drop those circles on, on this o- overlay and, and send it to you as a PDF, if you wanna see what that looks like.
You've gone through it and you feel that this half mile distance is adequate to. Let's say cover most of the village area that could be developed.
I think, I think walkability is one standard, it's a good standard. The other, the other standard I might think about here is. You know, let, let's, let's say that, that in dropping that, you know, one half mile radius. Right? That you absolutely, you, you actually required. No public open space in Village Northwest, because what you had with the Japrags and, you know, the Rec Field. Right? Covered it, right? Is that really your vision for that area? I don't think so, right? So, um. There, there may need to be perhaps an alteration of that distance or another test, right? Not sure that we wanna totally absolve requirement for onsite. Open space. Right? Uh, based solely on a half mile.
Well, remember, this section is the section on the, on the opt out. You know, write us a check uh to go towards a fund that will help create public open space elsewhere.
Again, if everybody decided to write the check, and I, I know there's the caveat about, you know, so much size, you gotta do so much, you know, local. Uh, but if everybody wanted to write the check, you'd have a community without, you know, um, patchwork open space.
Yeah, would they all be trying to assign their half mile to their project?
Well, well, yeah, I mean, well, I mean, it's, it's for any project, right? Comes in, right, your project A, DRB looks at it, draws the radius, oh, you know.
There's some other open space.
You qualify next.
Right, but it, I think the, the way I think about this is, and I think Dennis was on this wavelength. The official map guarantees there's, there's, there are, there is going to be space for the town to, to develop and create. Larger public open spaces and this design standard says, we also wanna see. Uh, some of those in uh interior to developments, perhaps in other locations as well. But if, in the, in the worst case scenario that you're talking about, Joe, if every project uses the contribution alternative and buys their way out. Then at the very least, we'll, we'll have these official map areas and a lot of money to have, to actually build them. Um, and will that do the trick? You know, is that, is that enough?
Is that enough?
With the understanding that, um, it's, it's not an, it's not an automatic. The attorney wanted us to make this an automatic, so we didn't have to go through any sort of legal challenge, but it's not. This, this says, it's an option. But you have to, you have to meet these bullet items, right? You have to, you have to demonstrate that the providing the open space would materially affect your.
I don't necessarily have a solution here, I'm, I'm just stating. You know, one, one possibility of, of how this can, can play out.
Well, another way that you could better assure or address your concern is to change the, the bullet that says. Um, for projects on one or more parcels that total ten acres or more. At least fifty percent of the required open space has to be provided on the project site. That ten acres is not magic, you could reduce that.
Fairly decent size.
And then the, the, the smaller lots, you know, are still gonna have to provide uh at least half of the requirement.
I kinda like that idea. I gotta be honest, I'm getting a little tired tonight.
Well, it is uh eight fifty-three, so. Seven minutes until the magic, uh.
Yeah, I, I'd like to consider, if we can, a little more on this. I like that idea you put out, but I like to. Run it through my mind to see what I think it would imply.
Okay, well, we can talk about it some more at the next meeting. I can tell you that the planners that I got feedback from. Were also concerned about the, about the buyout and, and. And people just writing a check. But their comment was, make the, make the dollar amount high enough that that's. Not as likely to happen, like it'll happen, but only happen in cases when the developers really squeezed and they just can't provide the open space on the property. I, and whether this is the right number to make sure that happens, I'm not sure, but it seems like a decent number. And I, we can talk more at the next meeting about how I modified this, cause the last version was a little more complicated and I did simplify it here as far as that dollar amount.
I don't remember ever talking about the dollar amount, but maybe I wasn't here. Kind of, did we discuss that?
Did a little bit.
We did? Must have missed it.
I can, I can walk you through it some more at the next meeting. But in the meantime, if you wanna ponder and come ready to talk more about, you know, that section.
I would, but. I guess other, some other people would. You would?
Cause I certainly don't like when, what Joe said, oh, everybody did it. That, and, and it's possible, but not, doesn't seem to me probable, but what do I, I don't know. I like Al- what Alex said, make it expensive, not look sorry.
So you wanna continue this to the next meeting, Joe?
And sometimes it's just easier to write the check and not, not have to worry and.
Right, but I wouldn't, would be. Not good if everybody wrote.
That's right, but, you know.
I think we all agree, right?
Yeah, yeah, that could happen.
The, the new development at the south end of town. Do they, are they within a half mile of green space? I don't, I don't know what their plans are, so I.
I would think they would be because of Lyman Park, right?
I think so, I think Lyman Park is within that range. It might be close though. The sidewalk is about a thousand feet of sidewalk along one sixteen. So, yeah, Lyman Park should be within half mile.
Not that far, yeah.
So you wanna go on to minutes quickly?
John and I work here, so.
On page two, where it says Andrea M. commented. I guess this makes it sound like the pa- the gravel path is kind of unusable, but I think it, she just meant it was a. Gravel and grass path that was available to be used.
So this is the paragraph that says Andrea M. commented on the red line for.
Uh, how would you recommend modifying that?
Um, well, I guess it, overgrown is not accurate, I wouldn't say. It, it's a gravel and. It's a maintained gravel and mowed grass path. I guess it's, it's not. Super obvious, um, but it's not overgrown.
Other comments? If not, do we have a motion? We have a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So we just have a quorum here tonight, so. You can vote with a majority and a little abstention. All right, um, other business?
Uh, just a couple of notices about the various Hanaford appeals. The planning commission did provide testimony via Jeff and via your memo. Uh, Jeff just talked through the memo at the DRB meeting. So, so you were officially notified that Hanaford appealed their site plan denial. And then, um, Responsible Growth Heinsberg appealed the subdivision provision approval. And so, uh, that notice hasn't come in yet, but I'm giving you that notice now, it's been appealed, so if the planning commission wanted to participate. In the environmental court appeal process. You participated in the DRB process, you have that right. That's what the notice is all about, saying if you wanna participate, you gotta contact the court, enter an appearance on behalf of the commission. My suggestion is, don't even, don't even think about it. The select board is, you know. Is the body that will represent the town in that, in that appeal process. Doesn't preclude the planning commission from throwing a tat in the ring too, but it would confuse things a lot, and I don't, I wouldn't recommend it.
I think that's been our general policy before is we let the select board speak in these sorts of instances.
So what is this, what's the status of the official map uh role in the Hanaford?
Good question, so, um. This, the DRB denied the site plan in part based on the official map. Our town attorney feels that that means that the official map sort of clock, the hundred and twenty day clock was triggered. But he said, there's just so little case law about how that works when the, when the uh decision is on appeal. That he's not clear on whether the clock actually is running or whether it'll start running after the appeal. And so, he's been talking with the select board about, um, uh, options on that front. And the select board has had some executive sessions and I believe they're gonna. Give him his marching orders at their next meeting on the nineteenth. Again, in executive session, so. So we'll see, is the answer. Um, my suggestion is. That we oughta ask the court for a formal stay of that clock and, um. So that we don't have to worry about it right now, we can. so that we don't have to worry about it right now. We can put off any decisions that the select board wants to make about that until after the appeal is heard. Because it's a de novo appeal, which means the court reviews it fresh, brand-new again, and doesn't give deference to the DRB decision. So the court could come to a very different decision and, and if it does, then the DRB's decision is moot. And so it's just awkward that way and I, I think it makes sense not to have the town wringing its hands over that until we, we know what the real pathway is. But I don't get to make that call. The select board is gonna figure that out with the, with input from the town attorney.
If anybody's interested in the nitty-gritty of that process, look at the select board meeting that just happened, the latest select board meeting. This room was filled, filled with people. Filled, I mean it. They were in the hallway as well. Uh, and there was a lot of discussion about those, uh, questions. Nobody at that meeting, I would conclude, really knows what the process would be.
Yeah, the appeal makes it confusing. If there were no appeal, it'd be much clearer what the process was.
Even, even the question of when does the 120 days start? There was no clear answer. No one knew at that select board meeting. They knew they needed to find out.
Yeah.
But no one knew how it was going to work. So.
But I think at that meeting, Responsible Growth Heinsburg essentially said, we have citizens who have pledged to help the town purchase the property if the town were to want to go down that path.
Right. There was a lot, there was a lot of discussion about other questions, other elements of, of, of that, of the whole issue. But in regard to 120 days, nobody knows how that's going to work. Does it get set aside because things are appealed?
Right, or is it ticking and it will continue to tick?
Any way, or does it get ticking and then stop and then tick again and?
Yeah, we don't know.
We need a court's opinion. We don't know.
None of us can, it's, to me, confusing and, and it, it's just, we don't need to speculate. And that's all we're doing.
Yeah. The only other item I had for you was, it's budget time. Um, and normally I'd talk at some length with you about the budget. I wasn't really planning on it this year because, uh, our budget is largely eaten up by personnel costs. And the one item that we have some wiggle room on is our special projects line item. And for the past couple of years, my recommendation has been, um, fund that at a, at the $6,000 mark because that covers our local match for a maximum municipal planning grant that we apply for every year for one project or another. And it's enough additional money, um, within that 6,000 to have local match for, um, the regional planning commission's grant project or grant program, which they also do once a year. So that, that's what I'm planning to recommend to the select board again. What exactly that project will be, is a little bit up in the air and we can talk more about that over the next month or two before I step in front of the select board in December and make a final, you know, pitch to them. But I don't know that it will really impact the budgetary request. The select board is telling all the departments, you know, we want to hear what you need, but we don't really want to see an increase of more than 2.8%. So, um, I don't think, you know, if we wanted to shoot for the sky, it would be very well received. And I think what we've been asking for is adequate to, to go after these grants, to do the larger projects at this point.
Does the select board like to know what that 6,000 is going to, how it's going to be used?
They, they like to know, yeah, what, what grant programs we're gonna leverage. Um, and it's always good to know possible projects that it might, that we might work on. Um, but last year I was a little vague about that and they were okay with that, um, because they, I presented what the commission and other aspects in our planning department are working on currently. And they understand that this, this is for, uh, funding starting July 1st of next year. It's a little hard to predict. And since it is match for the municipal planning grant and the applications for those are in November of next year, that's even further out. And that doesn't get granted until the January following. So it's all very forward-looking. I think it would make sense for us to chat a little bit about the future projects, but, um, I don't think we have to have it pinned down for the select board, especially if we're requesting the same as what we did last year.
And right now we are applying for support.
We are waiting to hear back from that grant, um, on architectural design standards. Yep.
Right, so that's in already.
Right. So that's all I had for you.
Alright, thanks Alex. Anything else?
I just wanted to point out, I'd sent a couple of things to everybody. I found them really interesting, that the ideas, the concepts that, uh, were discussed in, in those articles that I had stumbled onto. Partly because of what Rolf had said in his comments, that he was reading a particular book right now and was finding a lot of interesting ideas. And I, so I poked around and find, found some more and sent them to you guys. I found them interesting. We're spending time looking at. They're not long. There's a nice video of a man who does urban design, low-income housing, high-density environments. Uh, it's five minutes, you know, it's a TED. And it's not as intense as a TED Talk. If you've ever watched a TED Talk, it's like buzzsaw.
We'll just put June, Friday, June 28th on your calendar for communal dinner.
You, you schedule things really far in advance. You know that, right?
Well, we, we plan the whole year ahead of time. And we talked about it at the last meeting and they said they wanted to do June instead of May, so. Friday, June 28th. I know.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Alright, thanks everybody.